I'm gonna step away closer to tents. You ready, William? Cool. Okay, good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, July 8th. It is nine o'clock in the morning, and I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. First up, we do have our invocation part of our agenda, which I'm gonna invite Pastor Vanna Granger from Church of the Crosses to the podium to give our invocation today. That one right there, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you. Today, I'm gonna take the prayer from a very wise king. It was Solomon, and I'm taking this prayer from First Kings 3:7. I'm going to read the verse, and then I'm going to pray. And now, oh my Lord God, you have made your king your servant, king in place of David, my father. Although I'm but a little child, I do not know how to come in and go out. And your servant is in the midst of a people whom you have chosen, a great people, too many to be numbered or counted in multitude. Give your servant therefore an understanding mind to govern your people, that I may discern between good and evil for who is able to govern this, your great people. And so, I'm going to pray now. Father, we thank you, and we're so grateful for every commissioner. And we ask that you would bless them, because we are in the midst of a beautiful county here, and we're grateful for this. And we are populated with a great people of Doniana County. And please bless every commissioner with an understanding mind to govern and a generous heart. Pour your spirit of wisdom and understanding on this house, that they may be able to discern what is right and wrong. We pray that this house will be in alignment with your will, for you are full of grace and goodness towards mankind. Give them the courage and grace to turn to you for wisdom when they don't know which direction to go, and bless their families with peace and wholeness. I pray in Jesus's name. Give every commissioner the grace to understand the invitation that is being given to them. Come unto me, all you who are weary and heavy laden, and I will give you rest. Take my yoke upon you, take my yoke upon you and learn of me, for I am meek and lowly at heart, and you will find rest to your souls. And Father, I thank you that underneath are everlasting arms, in Jesus's name, amen.
Okay, next up, if you're able to stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance, please do.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay. Ms. Brandy, if I can get a roll call for determination of quorum, please.
Commissioner Garmados.
Present.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Sanchez. Vice Chair Chapado. Chair Shaw Jordan-Andes.
Present. Okay, we do have quorum. I believe Commissioner Chapado will be joining us here momentarily. So, the commission convenes as a Board of County Commissioners and the County Board of Finance in open session. County Manager Andrews, do we have any changes to the agenda today?
Hey there, sir. Good morning, everyone. Unfortunately, we do have a change. I would like to pull item number eight. A little frustrated, but we don't have all the information we need to continue to proceed, so we will have that for you at the next meeting.
Okay, we will be pulling under approvals item number eight. Any other changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda, where the board will be asked to approve by one motion the following items of reoccurring or routine business. We have items number one through five today. Commissioners, do we have a motion?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Garmados. I'll go ahead and second that motion. Commissioners, any discussion? Seeing none, Brandy?
Commissioner Garmados?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Chair Shaw Jordan-Andes?
Yes. Motion carries, consent agenda is approved.
We have three resolution numbers for the consent agenda. Item number one, resolution number 2025-78. Item number two, resolution number 2025-79. Item number three, 2025-80.
Wonderful, thank you, ma'am. Okay, next up, we will move on to our employee recognition portion of the agenda today, where the commission will recognize Doniana County employees for their years of service to Doniana County. And we have our Assistant County Manager, Ms. Weir, here today to kick us off.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Today, we have five service anniversaries that we would like to recognize. The first one is Officer Jose Torres from the Detention Center, and I believe he is able to join us today if he would like to stand for a moment to be recognized. Jose has 10 years of dedicated service with Doniana County. Ms. Suzie Cordero is the Executive Assistant to Commissioners Sanchez and Chapado, and I believe she may be here with us as well, and she also has 10 years of service. Ms. Erica Enriquez is the Fleet Administrator with 15 years of service. Officer Alfonso Zimmerman is a detention officer with 15 years of service. And finally, Officer Noe Cervantes is also a detention officer with 15 years of service. Please take a moment to express your appreciation to our dedicated employees for their service to our community. Thank you.
Awesome. Next up, we do have our special recognition, where the Human Resources Department will present the Employee of the Month and Special Recognition Awards to outstanding Doniana County employees. And we are having this presented today by our Director of Human Resources, Ms. Haynes. Welcome.
Good morning, Chair Commissioners, Meg Haynes, HR Director. I am honored to be here to give special recognition to Sergeant Luis Ruiz with the Detention Center. Sergeant Ruiz, if you'd please join us. Congratulations. Sergeant Luis Ruiz has been selected for our Employee's Special Recognition for June. Some of the comments that led Sergeant Ruiz to be selected were, he serves as a dedicated member on the Special Operations Response Team and Security Threat Intelligence Unit. Sergeant Ruiz has demonstrated commitment to the safety and security of staff and inmates. He has demonstrated selflessness in placing his Detention Center family as a top priority to ensure safety. And Sergeant Ruiz is appreciated for his hard work, dedication, and leadership. Thank you, Sergeant Ruiz. Nominations are currently being accepted for awards in July, but please take a moment and help us celebrate Sergeant Ruiz. Thank you.
Okay, awesome, and congratulations again. We do have our public input portion of our meeting today. If we can please get anyone that wants to address the commission, if you'll please come forward to the podium, there is a white binder to your left-hand side. We have three minutes on the projectors. You will have three minutes to address us. If you will please state your name during your address for me, please, and floor is all yours.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Donald Wilson. I'm the current president of Velocrusis, Inc. Velocrusis, Inc. is a local pedestrian and bicyclist advocacy organization. Our purpose is to transform Los Cruces and the Missa Valley into a great bicycle and pedestrian community. As you know, Doniana County recorded a record number of vulnerable road user deaths in 2022. 16 vulnerable road users died on county roads that year. Since then, the County Commission has engaged in a systematic review of road safety and access through the Safe Streets for All Grants, and results are favorable. In 2024, the number of vulnerable road user deaths fell further to only 10. However, much still needs to be done, as we heard of a pedestrian death just last week in Sunland Park. Doniana County is making progress, and the current Safe Streets for All study is evidence of the commitment of county officials to address this issue. While it is clear that the County Commission is taking positive acts to reduce road user deaths, I'm here today to request that Doniana County Commissioners formally adopt a Vision Zero goal to eliminate road user deaths on county roadways. By joining the Vision Zero Network and adopting a Vision Zero goal of eliminating road user deaths in the Missa Valley by January of 2035, or by adopting the New Mexico Department of Transportation Target Zero goal of eliminating road user deaths by 2050, the County Commission will establish a vision and a goal that will guide road use development efforts towards eliminating road user deaths. This includes drivers of automobiles, pedestrians, cyclists, motorcyclists, and people in our community that work on the roadways, like first responders and roadwork crews. While the 2035 goal is an ambitious goal, other governmental entities within the Vision Zero Network have proven that taking a safe systems approach will result in fewer road user deaths. The contractor hired by the county to coordinate activities under the Safe Streets for All Grant is advocating the use of safe systems approach. It is a fundamental part of the Vision Zero Action Plan. What I'm asking the commission to do is to guide this effort by making a definitive statement that everyone in the county should be able to move around the county without risking death on our roadways. Velocrusis stands ready to partner with the county and the contractor to use the opportunity provided by the Safe Streets for All Grant to improve the quality of life for our residents by improving the safety of our roadways. Thank you for considering my request.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Ms. Vice Chair, and the rest of the commissioners. My name is Longino Bustillos, and for the record, I want to let you know that I am a member of the MPO B-PAC Committee, but I am not representing the committee here today. I am, as a cyclist and a member of the Vulnerable Road Users of New Mexico, I'm representing Vulnerable Road Users of New Mexico. I live in District Three, but basically, I'm an avid cyclist. I all bike to Hatch, I'll bike down to El Paso, halfway to Alamogordo. As far as I can to Alamogordo, I mean, there's not really a good way to get there. So, first, I want to commend the committee for doing the Safety Action Plan. I read through it. There's some good stuff, roundabouts, there's some quality things in there. I think it's a great initial step, getting that funding. Like I say, I ride all over the county, and recently, I rode up to Doniana. There's a new paved road down in front of my in-laws in La Mesa. There's a new paved road there. I was like, well, there's no lines. I was a little worried, because people say that the traffic moves very heavily down that road, and they do. People see a wide open lane with no lanes, they're flying. But as a cyclist, I found, I kind of liked it and went one way, because when people scooted around me, they gave me the whole road. They gave me lots of room. So, I was like, you know, maybe not having lines is a good thing. The, again, when I went through the plan, the latest statistics for Doniana, if you look at 20 to 24, it's more recent than the report that you guys put out, 55 fatalities and 587 injured. I'm here, vulnerable road users, we have several injured cyclists in our group, and when you think about that 587, how much it impacts your, including myself, impacts your life and how your whole life changes for the rest. I see those, I see there's a plan, but when I'm riding on the roads, I'm not seeing in action, so I think we need some more follow-through. As far as like Mr. Wilson talked about the Vision Zero, it's good to have a plan, but I think we need something on some more, we need to go a little, push it a little further so that nothing like what happened to me happens to anyone else, because it's a life-changing experience. So, again, I just want to ask the committee, the commission, to consider adopting a Vision Zero, or I think the state has, the NMDOT has adopted Target Zero, or just something that really puts the pin to the pavement and changing. So, again, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, hello. Thank you, sir.
Mark Veith. Good morning.
Good morning.
So, at one of the meetings, a man said that you don't become a Christian by reading a book. It's sad that he would call the Holy Bible a book. So, I want to read what Jesus had to say about this. In the Sermon on the Mount, he said, "Not everyone who says to me, 'Lord, Lord,' will enter the kingdom of heaven; but he who does the will of my Father, who is in heaven, will enter." Many, many will say to me on that day, 'Lord, Lord, in your name did we not prophesy? In your name cast out demons? In your name do many miracles? And then I will declare to them, 'I never knew you; depart from me, you who practice lawlessness.'" So, this is saying, Jesus is saying, there's a lot of people out there that call themselves Christians that aren't. Some of the reasons that the Christianity went the way it did in the first centuries is, I'll give two verses. "We are of good courage, but we'd rather to be absent from the body and to be home with the Lord," present with the, absent from the body, present with the Lord. In the Philippians, I was in Corinthians and Philippians, it says, "For me, living means Christ; dying is even better." The Christianity really flourished in the first centuries, because people walked and believed that. They went to, it wasn't the gallows, the cross or beheading or whatever, singing. Some of them were burnt while singing, because they believed that after this life, they were going to a better life. Christianity took off in the beginning, because people would go out in plagues and help other people, because they knew if they died, if God didn't protect them from the disease, which it says in the 91st Psalm, that God would take them home and they would be in a better place. So, that's why Christianity thrives, and the Holy Bible is not a book. So, the slide that I dropped off to y'all, for everybody in here, it says at the top of it, "Voting to Violence." This was on the website when they were doing the No Kings Day. It says, "Resist Trump." On the far left, it says, "Political Violence," which I would say is treason, armed revolts, assassinations, riots, terrorism, and insurrection. And Commissioner Sanchez was wondered why I'm worried about civil war. There it is in black and white. Thank you, have a good day.
Morning. My name's Jim Hurst. "We have it in our power to begin the world over again." Thomas Paine, Common Sense, 1776. As America was emerging from the womb, Thomas Paine wrote these words. "We have it in our power to begin the world over again." One more time, just for clarity. "We have it in our power to begin the world over again." These are the words of revolution. What was the revolution for and against? It was against King George and the absolutest social order, the divine right of kings, the tyranny over, tyranny over the mind exercised by the church and those carrying holy books. The colonists revolted against their parent state, Britain, and established their own rational government. Unlike Britain, it would have no kings and no national religion. Oaths made by their ancestors to the church and the king were not binding on them unless they made them for themselves. The founders had it in their power to make the world anew, and that they did. Led by men like Jefferson, Adams, Franklin, and Paine, they laid a new foundation for the American nation. Paine's Common Sense was a thesis on the merits of democratic republics founded on reason rather than the absolutist principle of divine right of kings. The oaths of our ancestors to God and King were not binding on us unless we chose to be bound by them. In our dialogue concerning the invocation at the beginning of these meetings, there's a lot said about tradition, but we're not obligated to traditions. We have the same right as our ancestors did to reject those traditions, the traditions of the old world, and to create our own traditions according to our beliefs and our value. Let's do that. Let's do that. Let's establish traditions that include all of us. Let's establish traditions that offend none of us. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Commissioners. Name's Michael Simmons. I know you didn't expect to see me today, so I'll leave it at that. What I'm seeing today and what I've seemed to be stuck on recently is identity. Who is the king of your life? Who do you claim you are? Who do you say your parents were? We had, I think, from a month ago, Commissioner Sanchez was talking about his history, and I think you mentioned as well that your parents and grandparents and great-grandparents came into the country. In some cases, they were harsh with their kids to have them learn English, not learn Spanish and other things. The point of that, I believe, was identity. They didn't want to be identified as Mexicans. They wanted to be Americans. They wanted their children to be Americans. They wanted them to be able to have the opportunities that they didn't have. If they went overboard, I don't know. It's not mine to judge. If they didn't go far enough, again, not mine to judge. But they saw something in the United States that they wanted their children to have, and so they paid the price to make that happen. Do not forget your identity. The history of what they did, what they did for you and whatnot is important. A lot of what we're running into, the atheistic viewpoints, some of these others, again, is identity. Who are we as a nation? What is our identity? Who do we belong to foremost? And that layer of authority that comes down. The nation, according to me and everybody I've seen, except the atheists, is that America is founded by the Christian heritage. You have the pilgrims. You have that heritage coming down, identifying who we are, how we act, how we behave, how we treat others. We're talking about the martyrs in the first-century church. Christianity was their primary thing. They weren't Romans first, they were Christians first. The Roman government says, "You shall not do thus." They say, "We are Christians first, we will do that first." So that identity drives who we are, what we're doing. When we come to what we've been talking about recently, some of the illegal entry, illegal aliens, I know we don't like the term, I don't know how to sugarcoat it, we come into identity. We are Americans first. They came across legally. These others did not come across legally. What is their identity? They claim to be Americans. They didn't come in under the law, so that makes them still the nationality of where they were. So they aren't of us. They didn't follow our rules to become among us. So what is their identity? And what is our identity? And what is the proper response to that when it causes issues for the actual citizens of the nation? And with that, I will close, and I thank you for your time. You have a great day.
Any other public comment this morning? Seeing none, we'll move on to commission input. If any commissioner has any input that they would like to give this morning? Okay? Okay?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
There's several things on my agenda this week, and I wanted to bring them up. There's a board, there's a board meeting on July the 9th at 9:00 in the building next door. There's also command change at White Sands on July the 10th at 8:00. I'll be attending. There's a luncheon for Chief Master Sergeant Latour, who's actually changing command as well, leaving on July the 14th. Have a Chaparral community meeting on the 14th as well, before the next meeting at 6:00 PM at Betty McKnight. If anyone would like to join us. Also, on July the 16th, there's a Trinity Site Memorial that's actually being done by the people that are Downwinders. And they, there's a site location, or there's signs and everything about the Trinity Site, but there's nothing that explains about what the Downwinders are. And the Downwinders, I don't know how many people realize it, the Downwinders are everyone in New Mexico because we were the first place that was bombed. And there's some videos about that if you want to watch it. But basically, there was money allocated to everyone who might be affected by the radioactive waste that was left from the initial bombing. And New Mexico is the only state that didn't get any of those funds. Texas got some, Colorado, Arizona. New Mexico was excluded since the whole time, and so the Downwinders are trying to rectify that and have been for years. So now we're going to put a memorial up representing the Downwinders of us being victims of the Trinity bombing test. On July the 17th, CRUA, and I think, this is really for Commissioner Camaros, but CRUA is actually at 1:00 PM to 2:30, is actually going to provide a service rate study joint workshop in Sunland Park. That's really all I have. I would like to say something about the zero, I think it's the zero, I have to look at the phrase that you used, the zero goal vision for deaths and stuff. You know, I, I'm a cyclist myself, only I'm a motorcyclist. And I understand that having safe roads and safe communities and people who recognize cyclists of all kind, being on the highway and giving them the right of way and their space is important. And if one person dies, it's too many, and I agree with you on that. And 587, you say, were injured in 2024 and 55, I think, if I heard you correctly, died. That's excessive. And I'd like to say that we, I mean, I'm obviously sensitive, and I think this board is sensitive to doing that. And we have several challenges in trying to make that happen because a lot of the roads you're talking about traveling up to Hatch and are state highways. And of course, we have to get the state involved in actually creating roads that are more safer vehicles. And if at least we adopt policy and choose to go that direction as a county, then hopefully we can impact the rest of the state and try to provide more safe roads for everyone else. I think that, I think the goal here that we should strive for at this moment is for everyone to remember that they have to share the road with everyone who's on the road. And bicyclists, motorcyclists, trucks, anything on, even backhoes that are driving down the road, they all have the same rights and access to the road that everyone else does. And you have to respect that and honor that and drive safely and recognize that they're not in your way, they're actually have a right to be there and are obligated to be there. When you think a cyclist in the city that are riding along the city roads, they're not allowed to ride on the sidewalks. So their only option is to ride with the traffic. So I think it's important that we all remember that when we're out riding and recognize that even though a cyclist may go 20 miles an hour, we shouldn't be trying to come up on them at 60 and 70 miles an hour and get around them and respect their space. That's all I got. Thank you.
Okay. Any other commissioner wanting to give input this morning? Nope. Okay. Any board report back today? Any commissioner or board report?
Mr. Chair.
County elected officials' input. Pause. County elected officials' input? Yeah? Okay, let's do it.
Good morning, Chair. Sheldon Hernandez, Commission. Amanda Lopez Askin, Doñana County Clerk. I wanted to let you know, we were all preparing for the upcoming regular local election that is scheduled. It's something we talk about pretty much every year. Like clockwork, there is an election November. Historically, more than, I guess, 2018 and back, we had elections random times, sometimes in February, sometimes, and that would be specific to the entity. We no longer have that. We have folded in elections every November like clockwork. So I just wanted to offer that reminder. I also wanted to continue to push back on the term "illegal." I do not accept that as something that we left, leave unanswered. We are, we are sitting in Doñana County in Las Cruces, New Mexico, surrounded by Luna, Otero, Sierra counties. And so this idea that there's others or they is not something that I'm just going to let continue to be said. My family has been in these lands from southern New Mexico all the way to southern Colorado for hundreds of years. So the idea of assimilation is something that I think is ideal in a lot of ways and historically has been promoted. I will also say, I'm very fortunate to hold a PhD and from New Mexico State University, go Aggies. And one of the areas of focus that I have is specific to social justice and race. So the history of New Mexico is near and dear to my heart. I'm a mestiza, as I am a mix of indigenous, Spanish, and Mexican, and I'm very proud of that. It's a real tragedy in my family that much of our language was lost due to the forced assimilation, and it's something that my mother continues to carry great regret over not teaching me. So I just want to talk about southern New Mexico and the vibrant border community that I'm a part of, and that I wanted to continue to push back on the word "illegal." I think it is appropriate and maybe even a Christian thing to say undocumented because that is more acceptable and humane. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other elected official comment?
Mr. Chair. Sorry, there's one thing I would like to echo along with what our fine clerk said. You know, my native heritage is Native American. I'm one-eighth Blackfoot Indian. But I don't know what the religion was that they practiced for a thousand years here. But I don't know that it was Christian. I think they were forced to take Christian languages or Christian beliefs. Anyway, I think we should respect all peoples and recognize that we're here because it's a great place to be. And we, and I don't think there's anyone in this country that's not, can't go back on their history and say that they have, don't have ancestors that migrated to this country. And I agree with the clerk very wholeheartedly that people who are here, regardless of the reason, I don't call them illegal until they commit a crime. So they're undocumented. And I think that's a respectful phrase to recognize them until we get the documents corrected. Many people don't know as well that even if you follow the process of the laws of this country to become a citizen and naturalize here, it still takes anywhere from 10 to 20 to 30 years to actually become a naturalized citizen. That's a lot. Something else that we should recognize about people that are here, regardless of where they came from, is they pay taxes. They, when they work, they pay taxes. They pay the same taxes we all do. And it doesn't matter what their legal status is, they're still a contributing member of this country, and we need to respect them for that and allow the laws to work in favor of protecting everyone and everyone's rights to be here. Just my opinion. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to staff input?
Before Cory starts making her way up, I do want to take a moment. And Art Marufo is the new Executive Director of Mesia Valley Public Housing Authority. He's going to be coming up to the mic. He and I talked in advance and wanted to preserve a little time so he could introduce himself, and sorry about that, Cory. And come on up as soon as he is done. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair. County Commission. Thank you for having me this morning. Yes, I am the new Executive Director of the Housing Authority, Mesia Valley Public Housing Authority, that is, not the City of Las Cruces, not Doñana County, Mesia Valley Public Housing Authority. Little background about myself. I am a lifelong resident of this county. I was born in El Paso, there for a day, only because of emergency, but my dad and mom said, "We got to get back to Las Cruces ASAP." So I've been here 52 years. I've seen the growth of this region from 40,000 population to what we are now. I've been in the nonprofit housing industry. As some of you might recognize my face, I used to work for Terroir du Sol for 15 years as the Housing Director. Many multifamily properties, as far as single-family divisions, subdivisions, Envaldo, Anthony, Berino, with Rose Garcia and the staff. I grew up in Beverly Hills, not California. If you all know the area, Beverly Hills, up on Greg Street by Hermosa Heights, attended Lynn Junior High. So my roots are deep within this community. My past is, yes, I am from, proud parents of immigrants and Native American blood, Viron Mansotigua Indian Tribe. So I take that to heart. Going forward, Mesia Valley Public Housing Authority. I was away for about three years. I left Terroir du Sol, and I went to work in Washington DC for the Housing Assistance Council. And there, I got, I was fortunate enough to go and visit and work with groups in Appalachia and the Delta Region, Mississippi, Alabama, Florida, Tennessee, Kentucky. So I've seen a lot of this country. And they were very excited when I went in there to offer assistance on how to do housing with the resources that were available. There's no different from the Colonias, as Appalachia and Delta are also very low-income population. And they all want one thing, that is housing, and they want the opportunity to be, I should say, have safe, healthy housing. Now, Mesia Valley Public Housing Authority, I do want to let you all know that, yes, we have a lot of units within this region, but we only have two properties in Anthony and one in Hatch. I was going over the 2015 Doñana County Housing Plan, and I don't know if you had taken a look at that, but I think it's time to revisit that and see what we can do for the county. There's not been any new construction whatsoever. Four years ago, we had tried, when I was with Terroir du Sol, to bring in a farm labor project, but unfortunately, COVID raised those costs by, I would say, 60%, from $12 billion to almost a $30 million project. And we had to really cancel that. It was sad because that housing is needed, and it was for farm workers. So my goal, my vision from Mesia Valley Public Housing is not just to provide the housing, but to also bring the many resources that everyone needs. The tenants of our units need resources, especially during these times when they might lose their health care, they might lose food benefits. So it's time for us to get together and bring everybody together that can offer these resources. And also to be a voice. I've learned to build thick skin. I've learned to ride the waves of HUD funding, government funding, and I've learned from the best and the past leaders of housing not to take no for an answer. There's always a way to do things, right? So going forward, I ask for your assistance. I ask for your partnership, and I ask for your confidence to help me lead the City Valley Public Housing Authority, work with the city, inform the tenants, work with state senators, and let's just go ahead and get things done. And with that, I open up myself to any questions that you want to know.
Thank you for joining us here today. It's great to meet you. Board members, do you have any comments or questions?
I have one question.
Uh, Vice Chair.
Yes, sir.
You know, I think, I think we look at the new budget. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we look at the new budget that's actually been passed by the federal legislature, and I believe it's going to impact everyone, including your operation.
Yes.
And I'm concerned about that. Yes, I think we want to do what we can, but certainly it's concerning to all of us that we're going to have less money to do it with. So congratulations, good luck, and hopefully we can work together.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Hey, Vice Chair.
Mr. Marufo, good morning.
Good morning.
It's a pleasure to have you here. I understand that there's a list for housing right now. Well, actually, there's, you're not accepting any more applications. Am I correct on that?
You are correct.
And I also understand there's about 2,000 families awaiting housing right now.
Yes. Yes, and it's unfortunate. And there is a reason to this madness and the fact, and I call it madness because the Housing Choice Voucher is a great program. But what's happening is that we're having increasing rents, and the Housing Choice Voucher can only pay for so much. So our utilization rate on the Housing Choice Voucher program is, for an example, if we give them $600, you know, they have the $600. But if that rent increases, and they're paying $800, and they're covering that $200, it raises to $1,000, we have to cover that gap, the Housing Choice Voucher. So we overspend that. So I do have plans to how to tackle that, but resources are much needed. And, you know, we're not talking about financial resources. That would be great, but it's mostly voice, and it's mostly teamwork. It's human capital that's needed to help us get the message out there. So it's a shame, you know? I was once told that we can't be all I was once told that we can't be all to everyone, but we can be something to someone. So that's the philosophy I want to take into this. And hopefully, we can start knocking down that waiting list little by little.
Thank you, Mr. Marufo. Again, welcome. And I look forward to working with you because that's of great interest to me. I know that we have homeless children in Doñana County. And we have about, last count from the judicial system, about 800 homeless children in Doñana County. So I look forward to just sitting down and picking your brain a little. Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Well, thank you again for joining us here today. Congratulations to the board for your new appointment. Great hire. And we're looking forward to more presentations and more conversations from you in the future. I would love to relook at the 2015 Doñana County Housing Plan. We were recently given that plan in October or November of last year. And I think we had similar concerns and questions about why it hasn't been updated, where it's going, and so on, so forth. So hopefully with you in this position, we can start moving that needle even more. So looking forward to that.
Well, I thank everyone. Thank you, Commission, and I look forward to talking to each one of you. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Cory is making her way up. And after that, we'll have an update from Jonathan Mesias. And that will be all for today, sir.
Good morning. Cory Stonefielder from the newly formed Digital Communications Division of the County Manager's Office. You may know that April is annually recognized as National County Government Month. And to celebrate this past year, or this past April, our office launched a community photo project. We invited residents to showcase the heart and soul of Doñana County through their own lens. We encouraged everyone to submit photos that highlighted people, places, and natural beauty that make our county special. Whether it was a local event, a scenic landscape, or a favorite neighborhood park. The response we received was fantastic. We received, I believe, 215 submissions with a wide range of original photos from across Doñana County, each telling a unique story of life in our community. Selected images may be proudly featured on our, on the county's website, social media, and even in our print materials, with full credit given to the talented photographers. We'd like to extend a heartfelt thank you to everyone who participated in helping bring this project to life. The creativity from our residents and their pride in our county truly shines through. We're excited to show you a sample of the community's perspective with a compilation video created by our multimedia specialist, William Welsh. And after the video plays, I'll stand for questions. Thank you. I just, I'm here if you have any questions or comments.
Those are awesome. Thank you so much. There's some great photos in there.
Thank you, Cory.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Cory. I'm reminded that next time somebody says there's nothing to do in our community, that there's a litany of things that we just saw. Jonathan Mesias, Assistant County Manager. I wanted to provide you with an update on communication for the geo bond, for the referendum that's coming up, or the question that will be posed on the November election. As just, as a reminder of the timeline, just last month, the commission voted to move forward with the question. We will be working on refinement of that question together with our outside consultant. And we also talked about it at the work session. If you like, that's on YouTube. Also, for those that are viewing at home, you can go back and re-watch it in case you want to know more about the timeline, get some of the input and feedback from Sunny505, which is taking the public relations and developing the messaging and helping us in conjunction with Insight, who is also working on some of that outreach. At that meeting, we did talk about working together with the commissioners on getting some of your dates. So if you have already set them, let us know. I know some of you have had some growing pains with trying to solidify some of those dates in your community. The overall plan was to interface with whatever dates you had within your district. We can't guarantee that Sunny505 would be at all meetings, but they would be at some of the, some, at least one or two of your meetings to be able to make sure that they amplify and that they give you the basic toolkit of outreach. Then the goal was to have at least two to three cross-district meetings that the county would host so that we could invite people from across the region to give us input together with the delegation and other members of our community. So those specific timelines, we are meeting weekly with Sunny505 to get those updates. They have committed to getting us the information and the slogan for the County Manager's Office to review by July 15th, which is coming up quickly next week. And then we will internally look at that and bring it back to the commission for final action. In tandem, we will be working on the language and also doing outreach and getting the necessary estimates needed for any of the quality of life enhancements. We know right now that it sounds a little bit generic. Actually, the county manager and I had a meeting with the Las Cruces Chamber of Commerce just last, was it two weeks ago or a week ago? Two weeks. Time flies. And we heard some of the feedback. We took that as some of the initial discussion points. And we know that we want to get back to them in their board meeting so we can have those discussions in community. So that's a little bit more of a brief update. I'm happy to share this via email so that you can reflect on it. But again, the major ask today is if you are setting meetings in your community and in your districts, let us know, send those in advance. That way, we can help you coordinate with amplifying on our social, making sure we get the proper translators there if needed, and making sure that we get everybody's feedback. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mesias. So with that, our, since we haven't really started planning those dates out yet, and I'm sure that most of the commissioners would love for Sunny505 to be at every one of our meetings, is there a way that we can get their available dates? So that way, we can, I'm fine with scheduling around their dates to make sure that they're there at every one of my community meetings. So if we can get that by the end of the week, that way we can schedule our meetings. I'm perfectly fine with that. But I want to make sure that for my constituents and the individuals and the groups that are reaching out have every opportunity to have those conversations in person. I would rather know when they're available than for them not to be able to make it to one of my meetings.
Chair and Commission, yes, we can do that. Our next check-in was going to be with them this Thursday, July 10th at 1 o'clock. I'll get a note out to Gabe and Ashley to be able to have that update so that we can work in reverse. The other talking point here that we did commit to you and that was requested, actually, I think by you, Chair, was the master calendar. We are working in conjunction with Amanda and IT to make sure that we create that frequently asked question section, why are we doing this? And a basic, just a primer that we can push everybody in a bilingual format as well to our community so that we can start getting those basic questions asked and answered and being able to drive everybody to one centralized place.
Okay. And with that also, if we're starting to get those phone calls from constituents, from organizations, is there one person here at the county that we should be directing those individuals to?
I will be tongue-in-cheek because I know our county manager likes to give out his mobile phone numbers. So let me go grab it. No, I'm just kidding. You can certainly direct that to me. They can come through the main line at 575-525-5800. And that'll redirect to the county manager's office. If they have any questions, then we can drive them back and make sure that we get them connected with the format that they prefer. And also make sure that we get this signed up for any future newsletters so that they get updates as well.
Perfect. Okay. Commissioners, any other questions?
And let me just repeat that number while they think about questions. If anybody from the community or business community or any of our constituents or neighbors have questions, they can call the main line at 575-525-5800. I suspect as time moves on, we might set up a dedicated line to be able to answer questions and then redirect people to a website.
Okay. None others? Thank you, Mr. Mesias. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. That's all for today, sir.
Okay. Moving on to commission-appointed board report backs. If any commissioners have any report backs to give?
Mr. Chair, I just have one. So just to let everyone know that if they wanted to join in our CREA, our next board meeting is going to be next Monday at July, on July the 14th. And on July the 2nd, we had a special meeting to, and what we did is we ended up approving an agreement for CREA to transfer from Doñana County to the City of Sanlán Park for services of HR, IT, and finance. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Cametos. Any other comments? Nothing, Commissioner Reynolds? Thank you. Then we'll move forward with...
Do I need to say something? I think I said plenty this morning.
No, Commissioner, but I expected a report. We'll move forward with presentations, number six, Southern New Mexico State Fair and Rodeo Presentation. Mr. Arredah.
Actually, I guess I could say something because it might apply to him. I was invited to a meeting down in Chaparral last week on a banner. It was a put-up on Dolores Wright, that they had a meeting in Barry McKnight. I showed up at the meeting and it turned out to be a, like, almost a private meeting. So it wasn't, no, it wasn't notified correctly. So I was at the wrong meeting, asked to leave. That was interesting.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Chair, Vice Chair.
Good morning, Mr. Arredah. How are you?
Good morning. This presentation is actually going to be presented by our Travis Brown.
Good morning, Travis. Good to see you.
Good to see you. First off, thank you so much for this opportunity to Mr. Andrews and his staff for allowing us to do this. We've, I've been here numerous times. And having the opportunity to come back and share a little bit more than three minutes is very much appreciated. So I believe we can get the presentation. Is it? While, while she's looking, I will just, just start off by saying that we, we're only two and a half months out from, from this year's event. Our planning is, is moving right along. We have some fantastic artists coming in this year. We are unable to announce them just yet. We will be announcing them here in the next several weeks. They're very particular about when we're able to let people know that, that they're coming based on their routing and so forth. But we're, we have tried to kind of increase the caliber a little bit each year. And so this year, we've got a couple of very popular artists for our Friday and Saturday night performances. We've got some great entertainment also lined up for just the general entertainment with K-9 performances. As you are well aware, we have a very strong K-9 following in our community. And so those, those types of entertainment programs are always well-received. And we've got a thrill show kind of circus sort of event that I think is going to be also very well-received. And a ventriloquist. We have not had a ventriloquist to my recollection for many, many years, if it, at all. So we're excited to see how they move forward. Yes. That's, that's fine. That's fine. Okay. Thank you so much. Go ahead to the next slide, please. So this is the, the formal purpose of our organization, Southern New Mexico State Fair and Rodeo, that is in our bylaws. And, you know, it is as needs to be for legal purposes, pretty lengthy. But really, the things that I want to just point out here is our main focus is agricultural education and specifically how that is targeted towards our youth. And we do that through support of the 4H and FFA programs. We are a 501(c)(3) organization, so we are a local nonprofit. And that's something within the community, I think, because of the relationship we have had with Doñana County for so many years. Some people think that we are some way or another a county organization or a division of the county or something along those lines. But that's not the case. We are a nonprofit organization, just like any other in the county that is out there trying to do good work for our community. And, and we try to educate the public. I'm a firm believer that in today's world, most people, if we just promote the fact that we want you to come out to the fair to learn a little bit more about agriculture and how that impacts your life, it's probably not going to get a lot of people through the gate. So what we try to do is create an environment, a family atmosphere, entertainment, a fun and fiesta type of mentality that people come out. And while we're there and we have them as somewhat of a captive audience, then it's our opportunity to present them with some education for them to get to see the livestock and the types of exhibits and the gardening and those things. And perhaps learn a little bit about agriculture and how it impacts our community. We, we are a regional fair. Technically, we are a by-state fair because El Paso County also contributes and participates in our fair. But the, we're 10 counties within the state of New Mexico and then El Paso County as well. Next slide, please. Yeah, fairly, fairly straightforward organizational structure. You can see we have a large board, 30 members. And one of our board members, Ms. Cassie Simpson, is here today. And I would like to point out that not only is she currently a board member, she also is a past fair queen, a fair princess, showed at our fair. So I think that just demonstrates the type of commitment that individuals who have been involved with the fair, historically, they tend to come back and try to support and help us moving forward. We do meet monthly. There are only two, two full-time employees. I am one of those. But during the fair itself, we bring on other part-time employees and then a tremendous number of volunteers. And most of those volunteers, we work with local organizations, a lot of those youth groups through the high schools, Mayfield High School Band, Centennial Band, NMSU student organizations. And they come out, they volunteer, they provide support to us and to the community. And then at the end of the fair, we make a contribution to their organization and appreciate... And then at the end of the fair, we make a contribution to their organization in appreciation of what they've done. So it's a way for us to engage the youth within what we're doing and our event. At the same time, it's also a way that we can give back and provide financial support to some of those organizations. A couple of interesting things about it. We say there it was established in 1967. That was the first fair. Originally, it was actually the Doñana County Junior Livestock Show was the name of the organization roughly in about 1971 or '72. That changed to the Southern New Mexico State Fair. And then sometime in the '80s, and rodeo was added to it. So that's how we got to where we are today. But we have been around for 58 years now. Next slide, please. So this... Before I jump into this, I'd just share a little bit of kind of my personal history to give a little reference to where a lot of this comes from. My father was actually the 4H agent in Doñana County in 1967 and part of the initial group who approached the county and worked with the Doñana County Youth Livestock Show. He was a treasurer at the time and they were looking for a new location. So much of this history has come from first-hand accounts through him, as well as just my history. I was born the same year of the first fair. My mom was carrying me around as my brother and sister showed hogs for the first time. I grew up out there and I have been a lifelong participant of the Southern New Mexico State Fair and Rodeo. My children have shown animals. My wife has served for a total of about 12 years on the board over the years. So it has been very much part of our history. Even when I was about five years old, I cut my arm pretty significantly hopping out of one of the pigpens. My mom took me down to the first aid station where the Fair Acres Fire Department was set up and they patched me up. And she swears that that is part of the reason I became a firefighter is because I was so just impressed with them and what they did. And ironically, I was in the show barn in 2010 when I got the call from the city manager offering me the job as the fire chief for the City of Las Cruces. So that's part of my history and why I'm involved in the organization today and what is so important to me. But I think if you talk to people who have been associated with the fair, you will find similar... That story may seem a little crazy, but I can tell you there's lots of others out there like that because we have been around for a long time and we are a community event. So the original group approached the BOCC at that time. Adrian Ogas was the chair. They worked... The county was actually apparently third or fourth on the list for eligibility to gain control of the property through a public lease through the Department of Defense, but all of that worked out. And so the county did receive the property through lease. They turned around and contracted with our organization to basically operate and run the fairgrounds on their behalf. The county road department actually assisted the volunteers in moving structures that were on the NMSU property where the fair had previously been held and relocating those out onto the fairgrounds. And many of those structures are still in use today, believe it or not, 58 years later. Most of that was the livestock area where the animals are barned and housed. My father also said that the volunteers and the road crews worked together to build the original rodeo arena and the bleachers that have just recently are in the process of being redone by the facilities department at this point. So a lot of history there related to the county and our organization working hand-in-hand to provide this event for the community. And for many years, the Southern Mexico State Fair actually operated the fairgrounds as far as booking events, doing maintenance, even building new structures, bless you. And roughly about 2010 or so, the county facilities and the county itself took that operation back. And now we rent the facility just like any other group. We just happen to be, to my knowledge, the only one that rents the entire fairgrounds and does that for essentially about the course of a week. You have a tremendous amount of activities that take place out there. Most of those are kind of specific to certain parts or areas of the fairgrounds. We actually rent the entire facility, all parts of it during that timeframe. So we work very closely with much of your staff and we'll touch on that a little bit. But my father did say that the first fair, they started out with very little money in their account, a $600 guarantee from a carnival company for payment upon completion of the fair and a loan from First National Bank. And that's how that first event actually took place. And that Wednesday and Thursday night, it's always been a five-day event as it is now, Wednesday and Thursday night. Essentially, nobody showed up and they were starting to get worried that this was not going to be successful. And then Friday and Saturday, the crowds came in and they had a fantastic event. And that somewhat mirrors even today, our really about 75% of our attendance takes place from Friday afternoon through Sunday through the weekend. But that... The combination of the county departments and organization working alongside the volunteers of our group goes back to the start of our organization and the event. Next slide, please. So this just gives you a quick idea of the last couple of years, what our attendance estimates have been. In 2022, it was actually about 43,000. That was at least from any attendance records I can find. 2022 was the largest event that we have recorded, but our numbers have been extremely strong. When I came on in 2018, 2018, 2019, our attendance numbers were more in the about 25,000, 26,000 was our estimate. So we have built an increase in our attendance and hopefully can continue that moving forward. Next slide. This is something that, to me, is very important because this is really our purpose for existing and this is something that we don't do a very good job promoting and advertising. And that's what we do to give back to the community and those people involved. So again, the last three years, we've had over 37,000 schoolchildren that we have given free admittance to the fair to promote agriculture education. If you are private school, parochial school, public school, and you want to come out and do a field trip at the fair, then you will get in free. We want you to come out. We want you to experience the event and learn a little bit in the process. So that's something that we are very proud of. We also started providing a few years ago the Exceptional Rodeo. A few of you who attended the ribbon cutting last year for the improvements to their rodeo arena got to see some of that. That's a Wednesday night event. We bring in special needs youth from throughout the community and we let them get down into the rodeo arena with assistance of a lot of people and they get to be a rodeo cowboy or cowgirl for the night. And it's really something that is exceptional to see and just the smile and the enjoyment of those youth. We provide free community booths. That's something a lot of our local nonprofits, they're unable to take five days out of their schedule to staff a booth for that entire time. So we offer free of charge. You can pick a day, one of the five days of the fair will give you some space. You can come out and do some community outreach at no cost if that fits into your schedule. If you are an organization that can do five days' worth of community outreach and interaction with the public, then we will give you a much reduced cost on the space for those five days. We have contributed well over $25,000 to organizations for their assistance. As I mentioned earlier, primarily that's youth groups of some sorts trying to support them. Over $60,000 in scholarships in the last years to high school seniors. Commissioner Reynolds has been a part of helping us decide those scholarships for several years now, which is greatly appreciated. And then the big one, and that is not a misprint, that is over $2.2 million that we have paid out to youth, our livestock exhibitors. Primarily, the majority of that comes from our annual livestock sale, but that is also through a program we started about three years ago where through sponsorship, we actually provide some level of payment and premium checks to the youth who do not get their animal in a sale. That also includes increases in the premiums to our 4H Red Barn, which is the non-livestock exhibit. So that's the gardening, the arts and crafts, leather craft, woodworking, any of those sorts of things. And then our Veterans Building, which is actually open exhibits, and that's anybody, any age who lives in the 11 counties. If you are a photographer, an artist, again, gardener, you can enter and we will pay premiums for those. So over the... I wish there was some way I could come up with a reasonable number for how much we have given back to those individuals and into the community in 58 years. But as you can see, just in the last three years, that is some very significant number. So that's something we don't talk about very often and I appreciate the opportunity to get to share that. We also, you know, we consider ourselves a community relating that we have over 100 sponsors every year, over 100 vendors. We average around 300, 320 livestock exhibitors from the 11 counties and about 650 exhibitors within the Veterans Building. And again, those are not 4H and FFA youth necessarily. Those are school-aged children. Those are adults, people who just are looking for somewhere that they can exhibit whatever it is that they love to do. Next slide, please. This is actually probably a shortlist. I'm sure there's a few that I left off and I apologize for that, but I just wanted to make sure that you, as a county commissioner, has understood the level of support and assistance we get from your staff. And I can't stress enough, when I came on in this position as executive director in 2018, the relationship between our organization and our board and the staff was good, but it was not great, to be very frank. Since that time, at least from my perspective, it has changed dramatically. I'm constantly advising the board of how positive that relationship is currently with everyone from the administration down to the caretaker at the fairgrounds that is out there mowing the grass and fixing electrical outlets when they're going out on us during the event. So you can see there's a very, really very few left probably in your organization that aren't one way or another involved in helping us plan the event, whether that's working out the legal documents related to our contracts and us paying our payments and financing, to providing security and protection onsite as well as... And the facilities department has been amazing the last several years. Mr. Herrera was telling me before the meeting, a couple of the things that are in the works that will be completed before this year's fair related to continuing to improve the buildings and add insulation and replace doors and the revamping of the old rodeo arena. And just every year, the facility gets nicer and more updated and people notice that. We hear comments from the public and the community about how much better it looks, which allows us to put on a better event. And so, you know, even again, going back, that's been the tradition since the beginning, the relationship between our volunteers and you as the property owner and staff to ensure that we're working together to provide this opportunity through the community. Next slide, please. And here's just again, some of the highlights of this year's event, September 24th through 28th. We will have three professional rodeo performances. Again, we're very excited to have a roller coaster, one of the few carnivals that will have that in our area. That's going to be a new ride through our carnival provider and some of the entertainment that I mentioned there. You know, as I like to tell everybody, please come out and see us because at the Southern New Mexico State Fair and Rodeo, we have something for everyone and we feel very positively about that. We'll have lots of local artists playing music on the various different stages throughout the nights. The Exceptional Rodeo again Wednesday night, a couple of ranch rodeos, a youth ranch rodeo probably on Sunday again this year. So lots to see and do. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I again appreciate the opportunity on behalf of myself and the Board of Directors. I'm very thankful for being able to come up and share a little bit more about us and what we do and I stand for questions.
Awesome. Thank you so much. That was a great presentation with a lot of history there, so I appreciate it. Commissioners, any questions?
It's your turn.
Yes, Vice Chair.
No questions, but Travis, you always do such a great job and very, very appreciative and I know it makes an impact on a lot of the young kids, so thanks again.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Reynolds.
Justin, thank you for the presentation and, you know, it's not often in any position that we have that we get a chance to change the future of our children. And being able to work with the 4H and offering them a location and a place where they can actually first make money by selling their livestock, by showing their livestock and actually getting the scholarships and giving those out for college. You know, it's not many times in our lives we have the opportunity to make this kind of a difference for so many people. And what your organization does at the fair and at the fairgrounds has actually affected many more people than we can recognize. So thank you. Thank you for doing that and thank you for putting on a great show out there and making sure everyone is taken care of. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And that, you know, if I could just follow up on that real quickly, it is something that even within my family, my daughter is now agricultural teacher at Las Cruces High School and FFA advisor, and that came because of that involvement in the fair. So I think sometimes we don't necessarily recognize how wide those ripples actually spread. And so there is a lot of people who are impacted and when you're involved with the organization, you get the benefit of seeing that, but a lot of people don't. So it is, you know, very special for us to have the opportunity to share that with the public and again, thank you for that.
Chair.
Yes.
If I may, I'd be remiss if we didn't also acknowledge the contributions of our legislators. They have made numerous amounts of investments and namely Senator Crystal Diamond Brantley, who works hand-in-hand with Travis and also the facilities department to make sure that we align our strategic and capital request. So when you look out there and you see the repainting and you see some of the other investments, hopefully when you go out there in your boots, September 24th to 28th, you'll notice some of those improvements. And also, we will work hand-in-hand with the likes of the Southern New Mexico Fairgrounds for what the needs are in the future as well, as it was one of the major initiatives listed in our Quality of Life Bond. We didn't see a lot of pictures today, but if you wanted to see some, I would redirect you to Travis's Facebook website where you can see a lot of the great stuff that goes out there year after year.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Cool. Anything else, commissioners? No? Okay. Thank you so much for the update. I appreciate it. Next up, we have the approval of the minutes where we will approve the June 24th minutes. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Chapado and a second by Commissioner Gómez. Discussion questions? Seeing none, take it away, Brandy.
Commissioner Gómez?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds? Um, Vice Chair Chapado?
Yes.
Chair Shaw Jordan-Ades.
Yes. Motion carries. Minutes are approved, we'll move on to approvals. We do have three today, or two today since we're skipping number eight. Number nine, which is to award a contract to site Southwest under request for proposal 25-0035 in the amount not to exceed $150,000 for the Parks Recreation and Community Centers' Master Planning Services for Doñana County. This is goal... This request is to be included in the 2026 fiscal year budget. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion by the Vice Chair and we have a second... We have a motion by the Vice Chair and we have a second by Commissioner Gomeros. Well, okay, welcome. Yes.
Um, that, the dollar amount, uh, is incorrect on that. It stated here as 150,955, but we did forget to include tax on there. So it would be not to exceed 162,462.32.
What does it say in the budget paperwork?
The, uh, approval is requested at 150,955.
Say that again, sorry?
150,955 is what the request is for as being presented. I just noticed that that was inaccurate because that does not include grocery receipts tax.
I don't even know if we can move on that. I'll have to be tabled.
Mr. Chair, generally the contracts can be given for the amount of the contract itself with the additional tax added on, but it will require a budget adjustment for the tax portion. But you would be able to move on the contract approval.
Well, Mr. Chair, uh, I believe we can make an amendment to this, uh, resolution to add the GRT tax if we know how much it is.
Okay. Yes?
Hey, Michael, you want to add some context to see you walking up there, sir? Thank you for your help.
Chair, Commission, we usually present to the board the total amount for the services because grocery receipts taxes adjusted every July and January. So the tax amount that we present today will probably be adjusted again come July, or January, excuse me. And this project is estimated to be 13 months, so there might be three different times of tax rates.
Okay, so do we need to make an adjustment? Cause if this is standard procedure that it's going to change several times.
I'm comfortable with the not exceed level. Carrie, do you want to weigh in?
I think, um, I think that considering that it's going to change several times and we don't know the exact amount that you can proceed with the contract amount and then, um, and then we can present the grocery receipts taxes once we know what the amounts are.
So we're just going to approve it as is today and then you can bring us a budget adjustment at a later date. Cool?
Mr. Chair.
Yes?
Do we have an, do we have an estimate as to how much the taxes will be? I mean, like 20,000, 30,000? I mean, can we get like a, so we can do, go ahead and do an amendment to this appro-, uh, pro-, approval?
Well, let's just-
That actually covers that. Shouldn't we do that?
Let's just go ahead and vote on it as is. They can, and that way it's clean. And then they can bring us a budget adjustment later on. But I mean, it's in the packet. If you read the packet, it's on page. Ooh.
Chair, Commissioner Reynolds, roughly under the current tax amount, it's 11,510 dollars and 32 cents.
So we have two options. We can actually go ahead and approve this as it is now and let you guys bring us a budget later. Or we can say, uh, we can approve this with an amendment to say, uh, the amount to go to 160,000 to include, uh, GRT tax and not to exceed 165,000.
So since we already, what I would prefer and what I'm going to recommend, since we don't have a motion or an amendment yet, let's just go ahead and approve it the way it's written. It's nice and clean and then y'all can bring us a budget adjustment later on, which we can vote on at the next meeting. Let's just get this through the way it is so that our minutes are nice and clean. The resolution is nice and clean. Brandy doesn't have to do anything crazy and we will deal with this at a later date. That's what I would recommend.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Vice Chair.
I agree with you. I think that approving not the amount not to exceed 150, 955,000 and since the tax rate just changed July 1st and probably will change again a couple of more times before the project is finished, that sounds, um, very appropriate. Thank you.
Okay. I agree. Any other comments? Okay. That's what we're going to do, guys. Um, any public comment on this? Seeing none, Brandy, go ahead.
Commissioner Gomeros?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
No.
And Vice Chair Chapado?
Yes.
And Chair Shaw Jordan-Andes?
Yes. Motion carries. Go ahead with that resolution number, please.
This did not have any resolution documents attached.
Oh, you're right. It's just an approval. Okay. Next up, we do have number 10, which is to accept a grant award from Vital Strategies in the amount of 215,336 dollars for two full-time positions. Um, do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chair and we have a second by Commissioner Chapado, or Commissioner Gomeros. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Michael.
Good morning, Jamie Michael, County Health and Human Services Department. Um, Vital Strategies is once again, for the second year, offering us funds, um, for two positions. One is to continue an existing position that is helping us create the strategic plan for, uh, the investment of the opioid settlement funds. And the new position is a data coordinator because we know in the next year we're going to be establishing evaluation plans and looking more at, um, the data that exists and the data that we need. So this year, they suggested that we have an internal position to help us build that capacity in our department.
Okay. Any questions, commissioners? Okay, so public comment? Seeing none, Brandy, if you will roll call us on the acceptance of the grant?
Commissioner Gomeros?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chapado?
Yes.
Chair Shaw Jordan-Andes?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, next up, we do have another grant, which is to accept a grant award from the New Mexico Healthcare Authority slash Behavioral Health Service Division in the amount of 700,000 for the Reach, Intervene, Support and Engage Rise Program. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Gomeros and a second by Commissioner Reynolds. Jamie.
Morning again, Jamie Michael, County Health and Human Services Department. Um, this was part of an application that we submitted and we were awarded this grant award from the state. This is the third year of the funding and this supports all of the jail reentry program, um, to assist people with substance use disorder who are being released from the county jail and working on wrapping them in treatment and recovery support services at that point. Most of these funds are contracted out to existing contractors that are doing that work, um, on behalf of the county.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions? Follow-up? Public comment? Brandy.
Commissioner Gomeros?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chapado?
Yes.
Chair Shaw Jordan-Andes?
Yes. Okay, motion carries. Next up, we have another grant agreement. HHS has been busy. Accept a grant from the National Foundation of the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention Incorporated in the amount of 35,000 to participate in the CDC's Overdose Measures Matters Grant. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Vice Chair Chapado and a second by Gomeros. Welcome back.
Thank you. Nice to see you all again. Um, this was another opportunity that we applied for and were awarded under the CDC. It is a small amount of funding and a lot of technical assistance. So, um, in addition to the funds, we're also be, um, participating in a learning community and receiving some one-on-one, um, and group technical assistance from people at the CDC. Again, this is to support the development of evaluation plans and data collection tools that, um, we hope to use to monitor the investments of the opioid settlement fund. So this is just a small amount of money. It is not obviously going to fund an entire position, but it will help, help offset the time that staff are dedicating to this project over the next few months.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions? Seeing none, public comment? Brandy?
Commissioner Gomeros?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chapado?
Yes.
Chair Shaw Jordan-Andes?
Yes. Motion carries. Next up is, uh, number 13, accept an award from the Third Judicial District Court in the amount of 70,615 dollars for the Competency Diversion Pilot Program Forensic Navigator Position.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Vice Chair Chapado and a second by Commissioner Gomeros.
This is, um, funding that is going to be provided to the county from the courts as part of an MOU. Um, this is to support the ongoing competency diversion program that, um, the administrative office of the court is piloting and for judicial districts. By having the MOU with the court and the county, um, funding this position with their, with the court's money, we're able to centralize a lot of the diversion programs. So not every government is having to have individual contracts with multiple organizations in the community for different diversion programs such as reentry, competency diversion, AOT. Um, we're trying to centralize that. So again, we will use these funds to support the expansion of an existing pro-, uh, existing contract and provide these services inside the detention center and to people who are released from the detention center participating in this diversion program.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah?
Jamie, just out of curiosity, you, you said, you mentioned four different counties that are particip-, or four different courts that are participating. Would you please jog my memory on which they are?
I have to jog my memory first. And I don't know all of the official judicial district numbers. You may be more familiar with that, that lingo. So it's here in Doñana County. It is the district that is Otero and Lincoln County. It is the, um, Las Vegas Mora County and Santa Fe, Rio Reba County areas or judicial districts. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Public comment? Brandy?
Commissioner Gomeros?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chapado?
Yes.
Chair Shaw Jordan-Andes?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Next up, we do have one hearing, which is the final plat approval for type two subdivision to be known as Santa Malagro Subdivision. Commissioners?
Oh, so moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Gomeros and a second by Vice Chair Chapado. Welcome, Ms. Amesworth. Guess what?
Good morning.
I remembered. I'm going to swear you in right now. Do you promise to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this is a request for final plat for a type two subdivision with 38 lots. It's approximately 91 acres and lots will range in size from 1.48 acres to 3.6 acres. Uh, you can see here on the aerial, this is off of Las Alturas and Peter Heard. This is a close-up of that site. And this is what that subdivision looks like. Um, you can see these streets have been completed. All infrastructure has been installed and inspected. There will be a one-year warranty period as these will be accepted by the county for maintenance. And at this point, I will stand for any questions.
Okay, commissioners, any questions from Ms. Amesworth?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
It appears to me that this is, this is Peter Heard Road we're seeing, looking at now, isn't it?
It is.
Yes. Oh, this is RC Gorman right there.
Starting at Las Alturas.
I'm sorry, this is Gorman. Where's, uh, Peter Heard? Yeah, Peter Heard Road. You know, um, Peter Heard has always been a real pain in our side because it, it needed, it had a lot of flooding problems. And I appreciate this development, actually taking responsibility to go in and repair all that. I'm looking forward to this development, uh, for that reason alone. Cause it provides, um, that road was terrible. And every, every year it would flood to the point where the road, it wasn't safe to travel. And, uh, so I appreciate them moving on this development so that we can actually have good, safe roads in this area. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Aw, you all did your homework. I love that. Okay. Ms. Amesworth, do we have anyone here for public comment today? Okay, we do have a few. How, um, do we want to do opposition first and then the landowner? How do you want to do that?
Sure, I think opposition first.
Okay. If there's anyone in opposition of this final plat approval, please come up today. We also have the book to your left. If you'll sign the book after you're done speaking to us and please state your name.
Uh, my name is, uh, Don Pyle and I, I live like, uh, next door to the properties that they're building. Uh, one of the things that I wanted to bring up is what Mr. Reynolds was just talking about, about Peter Heard Road. And I've been, lived here for seven years and it has been pretty atrocious. And, uh, my understanding when they first started doing this project is they were guaranteed they were going to complete the road. They were going to asphalt the road, all of Peter Heard, and they were going to connect it to George Catlin. The, the most dangerous part of that road, when you're talking about the flooding, is the corner. And they, they left the corner dirt, dirt and gravel. And it is the most dangerous with a drop-off, with the severe drop-off on the whole curve. And they actually asphalted all the way up to where the curve got dangerous. But they left the whole curve dirt and gravel. So it's the, the most dangerous part of the road is still left dirt and gravel. And they, somewhat, you know, we were asking questions about it when they stopped asphalt and the, uh, they said, oh, they're going to finish that as soon as they start selling houses. Well, then we've talked to the county and the county says, no, we're never going to do that. We're never going to fix that road. So there's a, there's a one-quarter, one-quarter mile section, the curve, that never got taken care of. And it is the most dangerous part of that road.
That's true. Okay. Thank you, sir. Opposition, please come up. Again, make sure you state your name and then sign the book after, please.
Good morning. My name's Alan Murray. I live on George Catlin Road.
Wait. Please raise your hand. Do you promise to, do you swear to tell the whole truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Start all over again. Alan Murray. I live on George Catlin Road, which borders this new subdivision. There are nine properties on George Catlin that have the backyards of this new subdivision. I believe when the, uh, developer got approvals to make this subdivision, it was probably as a type one. And I think that now they're wanting to make it a type two. To me, that means that they are changing the variables as to what is allowed to be built on that property. Living on George Catlin, being the next door neighbors to this subdivision, we really don't want to see a property with, uh, mobile homes, uh, prefabbed homes, which was not originally the developer's, uh, reason for building this subdivision. It was not supposed to involve any of the prefab, mobile homes and that other type of, of developments. So my concern is what is the developer's main reasoning for all of a sudden wanting to change the type one to type two developments? I'm just wanting to get some clarifications on to why they should be approved for changing the type of development it is. That's it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Raise your hand, sir. Do you swear to tell the whole truth?
I do.
Thank you. Go ahead.
My name is John Jackson and I live on George Catlin also. One of the concerns that I have, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, the covenants for this property have not been approved yet or filed. I was wondering when that was going to happen or if it was going to happen. And that goes along with what, uh, my next door neighbor was just saying. What, what's going to be built on that property? What, what's going to be built on that property? And if the, if the covenants haven't been filed yet, then I think that they should be filed before it's approved.
Okay. Anyone else? Opposition? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to property owner, developer, someone? Hello? Do you swear to tell the whole truth?
I do.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Chad Sales, representing Royal Properties. The intent, the, the covenants currently read site-built only homes, 19 square feet or more. And we do not intend to build any more of Peter Heard. We built up to our property line. That's, that's the extent of what's required.
Okay. That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Make sure you sign the book, sir. Anyone else in favor of, please join us at the podium? Okay. Seeing no more public comment. Commissioners, do we have any questions for the representative and/or Ms. Amesworth? Yes, Vice Chair?
Thank you. And I'm not very familiar with this property. I know Commissioner Reynolds is. But when that curb was described and there was a egregious drop-off, I think those were the words that were utilized. Can you describe that curb and, and what's missing? And how could we, or how could the developer better address that? Okay. Thank you.
I'm gonna let her answer, although I have an answer too.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Chaparro, Vice Chair Chaparro, I believe the curve they're talking about is over here. If you can see the laser pointer up there, it's beyond, it's beyond the gray area that is the subject property. And so that, that road was previously unimproved and so that, that's primarily what causes these issues. The property owner, the developer, has met their requirement and that's to pave any part of the road that's adjacent to their development. Now, the county cannot require them to pave beyond what's required. They could volunteer to, but they, they have met their requirement. And so there is a portion remaining of that road that's unimproved and that is along the curb.
Christina, I couldn't see it on that screen. Could you use this one?
It's this section right here that is beyond the property. And so the, the subject property is this area in gray. And so anything adjacent or leading up to it is impacting that particular development. But anything beyond that is, is outside of the requirement to improve.
And how far beyond it is it? Is it 100 feet? Is it a quarter of a mile?
You know, I don't know the exact distance. I did hear the person who spoke say it's about a quarter of a mile.
The challenge, if I might say, some of the history of this, which these gentlemen I'm sure understand, is that this Catlin Road actually is privately owned and the developer never improved that road. And there's some flood, there's some, actually some issues with drainage there. And when it rains, it goes across the road and it fills that ditch and washes out part of that road in that, in that turn. So yes, it's not safe, but it's also not something the county can do with it. It's something the private owners need, need to do and no one's stepped up to it. And I don't know, unless we, I can say this, if the road was already improved to the point where the county could take it over, then we could assume responsibility. Okay? However, we don't, we don't have the permission or the right to go in and improve private property. And that's where we're standing with it. And I think that hasn't changed, has it?
You're correct.
Yeah. If it were, if it were our property and we could accept the road, already in a condition where we could manage it, that'd be fine. But the developer left it undeveloped and it's been that way for 20 years. Yeah, it's, it's not a good situation. But it's a partnership, has to be a partnership between us and the private owner to do something. I assume that you, you all don't own the road. It's not your property. So, yeah.
Sir, if you can join us at the podium, please, and state your name.
Can I ask one question about that?
Oh, yeah. I never put you under oath, so I'm gonna go ahead and do that. Do you swear to tell the truth?
I swear to the truth.
Do you swear?
Swear.
Okay.
Can you repeat what you said earlier?
Let me ask this question right here, that. All the roads around this area is really fairly nice, except for this one piece, one piece of road. And now when you're talking about it don't, it don't belong to the county or this, like the, okay, Peter Heard is the long road that they just did all the repairs to. And as, as it curves around the curve, it becomes George Catlin. Now, George Catlin is a county road with a green sign and the county takes care of it. And now they just changed the Peter Heard Road sign from a red sign to a green sign. So it's a county road now. So, so as it goes around, that, that road is a green sign county road. As it makes that curve, it turns into George Catlin, which is also a green sign county road. So as they connect, they're both green sign county roads. So, or is there just one little piece of the road that don't belong to anybody?
Exactly.
It doesn't make sense because one's called Peter Heard, one's called George Catlin, and they both have green signs now, which says that they belong to the county.
I'm gonna let Ms. Amesworth answer that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Reynolds, the section of the road that the county is accepting via this plat is the section of the road that's been improved. And so unfortunately, that portion of road that is not improved will remain private and will not be under the county's maintenance.
That's correct. I don't know how to fix that. I know we've talked about, I've been in this position for seven years and we've had conversations about this on multiple occasions. And I've been out there and met with the residents and we even had the county go out and improve the drainage system on George Catlin at that intersection so that would have less erosion. I mean, there's pipes to get, that, that the water runs through underneath George Catlin that actually get, gets blocked up. And our road crew have gone out there and cleaned those, even though it's still private property, in order to provide some safety, some safety there. But we, the county, aren't currently responsible and I guess neither is the owner because they, I mean, this developer, because it's not their property either. And unless the person who actually owns the land there for that road brings it up to county standards, we are obligate, we, we cannot go in and do anything. It's not our land. And that's kind of a problem. We have somebody in the back that wants to make a comment, I think.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Ms. Amesworth, Christina. So from what I'm hearing, we're having two roads that come together with the exception of...
Small section.
What is that small section? Is it a half a mile or?
It's, it's less than half a mile.
Like an eighth?
It's, yeah, it's from, from the end of that property to where the next road begins. And so it's basically just that curve.
Yeah, it's just, it's about an eighth of, if it's an eighth of a mile, that's probably more than what it is. It's probably less than that. It's a small section.
Would you please point it out on this side? Because I can't see.
I keep doing that to you. Yeah, it's, it's just that curve right there. I realize now that this road here is county-maintained. And so it is just that section right there, the curve itself.
This, this board could take some action on that, but it would be, it's something we haven't really discussed, partly because we could do it and maybe add the cost to the tax dollars for the people that live there. We could do it if, I'd like to get an estimate from the Rural Department on what it would cost for us to do that. And then have this board decide, you know, what we do next. But I'd certainly like to have the property owner take some responsibility for this. Mr. Chair, several people have their hands up.
Pardon?
Several people have their hands up wanting to speak.
So we did, is there a question for someone that is here? Because we already ended the public comment portion. So now it's just questions from the commission. So ma'am, unfortunately, since you didn't present earlier during pro or con, we can't ask any questions of you at this time. Unless it's a part of the question that Commissioner Reynolds asked or another commissioner or it'd be passed. Do you have a question for this gentleman, sir?
No.
Commissioner? All right. So we're gonna, any other questions for Ms. Amesworth or any responded?
Mr. Chair?
Of course, go ahead.
So, my question is that, that curve, right? I, I believe that there's several other roads as well that are, these are issues that are going to be coming up to the county, right? And I always hear all the time, well, you know, because that's not county, that doesn't belong to county, so we can't do anything about it. Can we find out who the owner of that property is? To me, if that road is county property, you know, that, that road, just because that little section, it doesn't make sense to me. Because the road, if the county owns that road and owns the other road and it connects together, I don't see why it, it can't be taken care of. And if it's just an, an eighth of a mile, and, and I agree with Commissioner Reynolds, maybe that needs to come up to the board. So that way we can look into that and if we can have that as a discussion in a workshop. Also, that way we can also bring up other roads that are having this situation. So, you know, that's what I would like to see because I want this to stop where it's not county, we're dropping it. You know, let's figure out a, a solution for these individuals that leave, live in these properties in these areas where these road conditions, you know, can be dangerous or, you know, mess up their, their vehicles. I, I think we need to figure out something either with the owners or with a different entity. I think we just need to stop this, like, you know, this is not our problem. I think we need to find a solution.
Mr. Chair?
Interesting. Yeah, Commissioner Reynolds?
There is one more thing that I'd like to point out, and that is that we don't have, we haven't finished our OEM, Office of Emergency Management evacuation plans for some of these communities. And if we had a serious situation in the Escondida area, the development, or the Talavera area, or the Las Alturas area, where one of the roads was blocked, like Tell Brook, okay, then, then we may need to use Peter Heard as an evacuation lane, evacuation outlet. And so that's something this board has not actually discussed and decided in our communities that are actually locked, landlocked, basically with one road. So I think it's something we should be discussing as a long-term plan as well about the emergency preparedness for some of these communities and make sure they have safe access to get out of. And this might be something that we could justify doing for this road because of that plan.
Chair, may I jump in, sir?
Sure.
I totally hear you all out and I do think we need to discuss this more in a future workshop. Spend a little more time on the topic and I know this issue has got some controversy around it in some ways and based off the, this going back many years, you mentioned Commissioner Reynolds. But I do want to remind us that we're looking at just the plat approval for this particular item and want to reel us back in a little bit. And I do think this, all these topics are worthy of a future work session, though.
Agreed. I will say also that our road inventory is wrong on George Catlin. We might want to look at that. It says that it begins at the Los Piedras intersection.
For which road, I'm sorry?
George Catlin.
Okay.
I'd like to also point out that this goes back to the reason this board has to be involved in these kind of developments to make sure that the future developments that we're approving don't, don't allow this to happen again for what's happened in the Escondida district or the, I'm sorry, yeah, which has been a real problem. I think for this one, though, I can't see any reason why we can't approve what's already been done.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments?
We, we have the option to go in a closed session without, do we need to? I don't think so.
If you all would like to make a motion, you're more than welcome to.
I don't think I need to.
Okay. Would you all like for me to call the vote? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Amesworth. We'll go ahead and call the vote. Okay. Brandy?
Commissioner Garmados?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chaparro? Chair Sheldon Hernandez?
Yes. Okay, motion carries. The plat, final plat is approved. Moving on, we do have any follow-up commission comments at this time?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, I just wanted to speak about, what was spoken earlier about the assimilation of, I, I agree with our county clerk, Amanda, with the forced assimilation that's happened within our culture. That's one thing that I can say has happened and, you know, when I heard about the assimilation that the Hispanic people or anybody that's come from another country assimilated because, you know, they wanted to be here. I can only speak for my family and the people I know that were raised in the area that I was in, that it was forced assimilation. It wasn't because they, you know, wanted to be Americanized. They weren't allowed to speak Spanish, their language, in school. It wasn't allowed. And if you did, they were, were met with, you know, paddles or smacking of the hands with the ruler. And that's even during Risa's time if they were out there speaking to each other in Spanish. So, you know, there was that type of punishment. So obviously, our parents decided they didn't want us to have that harsh punishment to stop speaking that language. So my parents decided to just have us speak English because they didn't want us to go through that as well. So, you know, we have to understand those of us that aren't of a, that don't have a first language or, you know, are bilingual in any way, they don't have an understanding because they weren't forced to have to go through that. You know, there was, there was a lot of things that the Hispanic culture in this area had to deal with, you know, discriminating wise. And if, you know, if you were, I guess, you know, weren't raised in a Hispanic culture, you wouldn't understand. So, you know, I just think that, you know, I, I don't harbor any ill feelings, I guess. I just kind of want to educate those that didn't grow up like that, that there was this forced assimilation that did happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other? Oh, it's just me. It's me and you, actually. We can't even continue this meeting. I don't have quorum. Welcome back, Vice Chair. No, the bathrooms don't work. You have to press the button. I figured that out today. Yes, if you try to use the restrooms in the back, they don't work. Well, hopefully the restrooms work. All right, well, we do have quorum again.
We have one. Andrew Sanchez versus Doñana County.
Thank you. Okay, and we do have a closed session scheduled for today. So I move that the board convene in closed session regarding a limited personnel matter, the person, the purchase, acquisition, or disposal of real property and water rights to discuss information that is covered by attorney-client privilege pertaining to threatened or pending litigation as authorized by the Open Meetings Act, Section 10, 15-1, H2, 7, and 8, NMSA 1978. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Brandy, will you roll call us into closed session, please?
Commissioner Garmados?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chaparro?
Yes.
Chair Sheldon Hernandez?
Yes. Closed session. Thank you all for joining us today. That is the end of our regular portion of the meeting. Brandy, you don't need to hang out. I'll let you know when we're done. Brandy, you don't need to hang out. I'll let you know when we're done.
Okay, welcome back. The time is 11:57 and we are back from closed session. And I want to make it known that nothing was discussed in closed session other than the items described in the motion that put us into closed session. So the time is now, goodness, 11:58 and we are adjourned. Thank you so much.